... take care of urgent matters, so beg your indulgence. But, moving on, call to order, roll call please.
Kristy Whitwer.
Here.
Helen Beck.
Here.
Chris.
Here.
Blackwood.
Here.
Bryanick.
Here.
Franklin, Whitmore, Mcnally.
Here. We can stand and recite the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Lisa, proof of posting.
The agenda was posted in the upper lower levels of the Amundsen Community Center, Badger Bank, Cambridge Post House, this D U and Old Village website.
Okay, alright, thank you. Moving on, public comment. Is there anybody that would like to speak about anything at this time? Okay, I see one person, two. Kathy, why don't you come up first, if you can introduce yourself? There's just two people here. Can we allow three minutes?
I don't need that much.
Okay, alright. You're gonna take time on this one, Tammy? You're watching time. Okay, thank you.
Good evening. Most of you know me. I'm Kathy Yurgis. I own Cambridge Market. As of April 1st, I am also the executive director of a newly formed nonprofit in town. The nonprofit is the Collaborative 523 Incorporated. I received a grant from a private foundation to help support some of the work that I've been doing along with the Cambridge Area Business Group to keep some of the festivals and events running in town. So, our mission statement is to energize the Cambridge area by restoring the vitality of the central business district, enhancing our community identity through focused efforts in promotion, economic development, and execution. Our vision is to advocate, design, and pursue community development in Cambridge through connecting businesses, organizations, individuals, events, and resources. So, it's much of the work that CAB, the Cambridge Area Businesses, have already been doing. It'll reach into a few other efforts. My goal is to support other local businesses to get done what they want to get done for their next vision, for their businesses. As such, the first event that we are bringing to town is Make Music Day Cambridge. Make Music Day is an international festival founded in France more than forty years ago. It was brought to the States about sixteen years ago. Madison is the number-one location for Make Music Day. Cambridge is now an official city under the Make Music Day event. It's always on June 21st, Summer Solstice, and I am in the process of signing up host locations and musicians for that, but it'll be a day of music celebration throughout Cambridge with free events and events for people to participate in and should draw a nice crowd from the -- we'll be focusing on the Jefferson and Rock County areas because they do not have a location for Make Music Day.
What's the name of the organization?
Collaborative 523 Incorporated. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Okay, Joe, you had raised your hand secondly.
Hello, Joe Evans, Cambridge市议长. Just wanna make sure everybody got the proposal, got a new one from Fire Services. Just wanted to see if you guys had any questions about this estimate? Did you guys receive this?
Or it is.
So, this one came in at fifty-four thousand seven hundred nine dollars and forty-five cents. This does not include new frame rails. This is basically knocking the rust off and painting it and replacing rusty parts.
Does this change your recommendation?
No. No, it does not. And this, and fifty-six hundred dollars would have to be, if this decides to go that direction, fifty-six hundred dollars would be put in for tires, which comes up, yeah, what did I say?
Fifty-six hundred dollars?
Fifty-six hundred dollars. So, it would come into around sixty thousand dollars would have to be invested in that truck that's up for replacements, like I mentioned at the last meeting, in two years, so. That's all. Anybody have any questions about the, about this estimate? Alright. And just one last thing. May 27th is obviously our breakfast at the station, starting at, I think, six o'clock. So, come and have some breakfast. Thank you.
Okay, Charles, line up.
I'm Charles Fiesel, I'm the Plow Restaurant and Ward's Mercantile. Just wanted to give a heads up. I didn't make it on the agenda tonight, but we will be on the next agenda. Wanted to give a heads up. We applied for, what's R F S I, Resonant Food Infrastructure Grant with the Department of Ag. It's probably about a three-to-six-month kind of process to see if it happens. It goes along with what I've been proposing for the thing. We had little technical difficulties last night with anything with electricity, so I printed this out and just wanted to get it in y'all's hands. There's a good chance I'll be in California during that next meeting and have to have someone else represent and present on that. So, I wanted to get you a hard copy to look at. Any questions, any concerns that I could answer before then and prepare the people that will be presenting would be awesome. Some of you are obviously probably not familiar with what we've been working on the last eight years, so I wanted to make sure that I'm giving you guys a hard copy, and I'm always free to talk. If I could leave these with you guys that maybe don't have.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to speak? Okay, I'll close this portion of the public comment. Approval of the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda. I'll second.
Got an approval and we've got a second. Any discussion necessary? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, carries. Going to move into reports. Let's just hold mine off.
Why?
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 Because I can hold off.
It's, it's, what's next in the agenda, Mark?
Yeah, I know.
You wanna make a motion to move it?
I have nothing that I, you wanna have a motion to move it? Fine, but I do not, I'm not going to go into it this evening.
Do you have nothing to report?
Okay, then you have nothing to report.
Nothing to report.
I thought you were, you were holding off till later. That's what hold off meant to me, sorry.
Nothing to report.
I apologize.
Okay, library board?
We met and went through five, four different board policies, which we will be discussing in tomorrow night's meeting. We did approve them. They are, should be posted on the library site, and we have another one to post that we will be finalizing tomorrow. So, we are getting the library all set up with all of their policies, which you can find on the Cambridge Library website. And again, remember that the library is now open Monday through Thursday till 7:00 P.M. Visit your local library, check out books. Thank you.
Okay, moving on, plan commission?
Sure. We met last night. One of the items was Mike Grump's CSM, which is on our agenda for later, and then the majority of it was Charles Fiesel, who we just saw. Gave a presentation of what he is planning on doing with his property. He requested potentially purchasing a sliver of land back from the village, which will likely make it to our next agenda for meeting, for discussion. And then, we went into just a very brief discussion about different ordinances and how things should be worded for zoning. We didn't go into too much detail because we had quite a few people missing.
Okay.
Questions?
Alright, thank you. Moving on, Bill, economic development?
Yeah, we met last night as well. Kind of a mostly informative session. We had several speakers. Charles was there as well, for a brief, I think Eric was a little briefer with us, but that was interesting. We also had Kathy came to ours as well and explained her thing. And we also had Deborah Ronbault, if I said that right, from J C E D.C., Jefferson County Economic Development Commission, who we are a member of that, and presented what that's about and how our involvement would work with that. Then we spent some time talking about goals and direction and kind of landed on mostly trying to figure out what we're gonna do, and we're still debating that, but we did agree, I think we were committed to try to support Kathy and her endeavors as much as we can. Her grant is only for one year guaranteed, so if we can help her get some wins, maybe she can get another grant or we can find some other funding for her, possibly keep that going, so. Good meeting. Any question?
Moving on, Mr. Todd Lord, our Director of Public Works.
What do you mean? Todd, Director of Public Works for Cambridge, Wisconsin. We've been planting trees in the terraces and in the parks, and we're about halfway done with that right now. We got a new flag, and it's actually a heavy-duty flag. It's a vertical stitch. They did a vertical stitch on it with heavy-duty corners. I wish they would've said that to me when they gave us the flag in the first place.
That's the one in Veterans Park.
We probably would still have the, be flying that flag. They reinforced corners and vertical stitched it. Working, working on the park benches right now, or the Main Street benches right now. We got the park, the park.
Picnic tables.
Brain. Table, picnic tables, come on. Park picnic tables. I even have it wrote down here. Park picnic tables done, and the A-Rip grant will not work because no farmer is willing to, to sign any of the paperwork and give any of that personal information, even though it won't be held against them, but that's, and we've moved on from that. And, that's about it.
We talked about putting a sign up one time for the restrooms in the park down there next to the bike. Was your staff doing that, or who was gonna do that?
I think we got a sign up there, didn't we?
Is there on the road or street or something to point in that direction?
It's down by the trailhead, right? We put one up to show where the bathrooms are.
We did.
So, you did put one up?
Yeah, that was, that was a while ago.
Alright.
That's why I'm like, did we do that?
We talked about that.
Yeah, that was a while back.
Yeah.
That was a while back.
Alright.
But, yeah, that's done, that was done a long time ago.
Great. Equipment is okay, everything is.
Waiting, waiting for that new plow truck. We're hoping, we're hoping that Party Bill wants to be interested in buying the other one, so.
Is your cold patching going okay this year? I saw you had a couple stuff you started on, on, coming in and down.
Allen Street?
Yeah.
Uh, no, that's actually Dane County.
Oh, it's Dane County, okay.
We can't, we can't touch the U.S. Highway like that.
Oh, cool.
Yeah, that's, that's all, that's all the Dane County stuff. But, we have been patching, but right now, our main focus is trees. So, we're making sure we get all those trees down.
How many trees are you planting?
Uh, we're just, it's twenty-seven, but they're, they're actually bigger trees than what we've been planting, so it takes a little bit more to plant these trees. Bigger holes.
So, it's good we're getting some rain then?
Yeah. Absolutely.
Anything else? Thank you for.
Oh, and the other thing, Jay and I will be going to the Zeolite iron and VOCs, and that will, that will end every class that I need for, for here.
Awesome. Good. Good for you, Tom.
Thank you. Village office update, Lisa?
Kind of a repeat. Election went very well. We had roughly a fifty percent turnout, so with the weather and stuff that day, went well. Finishing up on some audit stuff, they're finishing up on their work, so they still have some questions that we're getting. We're gonna have a call with them on Thursday, so continuing to finish up on that. Been working a lot on the fire and E M S stuff, some, the ongoing projects, we have a couple that will be coming, blank mission next week. Somebody came in talking about some smaller, like eight-unit housing, a new liquor license for the, Rob Warren is selling, sold his building, so, a brew tasting room, so that will be coming before us. Following up on the trees, I didn't have a chance, I just received, we did receive our Tree City, I believe it's our sixteenth or eighteenth year, so we'll have the correspondence in the next packet. Just a lot of big projects ongoing, couple of which will be on the agenda.
Okay. Any questions for Lisa? Alright, thank you. Let's move on. Tammy, we've got bills and your report, so.
On the sheet, we had, there was a bill that we paid ahead of time. We had a equipment loan we needed to pay to Badger Bank, so that was sent out before the bill run. Couple of bills on there, over five thousand. One of the big ones was to Mid-City Corporation for Lot Number Three. The first run was three hundred five thousand two hundred fifteen dollars and twelve cents. The second run, ten thousand twenty-five dollars and seventy-seven cents, for a total of three hundred fifteen thousand two hundred forty dollars and eighty-nine cents.
I'll make a motion to pay the bills in the amount of three hundred fifteen thousand two hundred forty dollars and eighty-nine cents. Second.
Second.
Kristen?
Any questions? Any concerns? I had a couple in here, and Todd just talked about it, the corner patches, that this is on a new flag, it's a six-hundred-and-eighty-three-dollar bill, or check. I thought our old flag was warranty, but did we get a new one?
It started after so many, they can only, they can only fix it for three feet. After that three feet, they'd have to replace it.
Alright.
And what happened was it ripped out, it ripped out on the, it ripped out where the, it was holding the flag. So, we had to replace it, otherwise that flag would've shredded.
Okay, alright.
That's why we opted to go for one that was a little bit more reinforced, reinforced in the corner, so it can last a little bit longer this time.
That first one was one that came free when we got the new flag pole.
Pole, right.
So.
My other question, we had a village employee, and I, I'm not sure what this is. It's a W R W A lacrosse conference meeting?
The, Cody and Derek were up at lacrosse for the Wisconsin Rural Water Association Conference.
Okay, alright, okay.
They're for credits.
Yeah.
They have eighteen credits every three years.
Of learning credits, so.
Alright, okay, that's fine. I just saw lacrosse, and I'm like, what is that about? And then, Mid-City Corporation, a check there for two hundred eighty-five thousand, we're okay.
The Well Project.
Yep. It's fine. You don't have any.
M S A got signed off on the payment.
Okay, alright. Any other questions? Alright, roll call, please.
Helen Beck.
Yes.
Chris.
Yes.
Blackwood.
Yes.
Bryanick.
Yes.
Franklin. Whitwer.
Yes.
Mcnally.
Yes. Alright, thank you. Moving into new business, portable restrooms in Veterans Park.
So, I just handed out to you, Lori Strauss had contacted me, they get the restrooms in the, in the park for the concerts, but looking at the events, it's pretty much every week, so.
There's an event from May 27th through June 28th without a break. There's one every, there's, the Lions has, has Memorial Weekend, then there's a concert, then there's Fire Fest, then there's a concert, then there's Make Music, then there's a concert, and that takes us to the end of June. I talked to my portable people, L R S, is that right? And, just for the concerts, for the five concerts, it's fourteen twenty-five, and I have a three-hundred-dollar credit, so that's already taken off that, so it's closer to two thousand dollars. For, if we rent it monthly, it will save us two thousand dollars. If we rented it, if we could get permission to leave portables in the park at Veterans Park, it would be a handicap one and a standard one. They would be cleaned out weekly. It would, it would cost only three hundred and eighty-five a month.
Oh, my gosh.
And, and so, now the Lions don't have to get portables. They don't have to get them for Make Music. It takes some of the, the pressure off the restaurants because there's not a lot of public restrooms, the ones here, but they're never available to the public unless it's during business hours. And that's not generally when people need the bathrooms. And, and ideally, we would keep it in place until the Maxwell Street Days, which is now being rebranded as Art on Main, Art on Main. And, so if we could do, so it doesn't cost the village anything, it's just I need permission to leave them in place for, for the summer. I think they'll be used a lot, you know, when people walk the circuit for Fire Fest, for example. If they have to pee at the other end of the building, at the other end of the street, they're in trouble. And then they're knocking on Bev's door, or they're knocking on Avid Gardener's door, and these people don't have bathrooms for the public. So, that's why I asked. It would save both the Lions, Kathy's new collaborative, and Arts Council collectively two thousand dollars.
I'll, I'll make a motion to approve allowing the Cambridge Arts Council to place two porta-potties in Veterans Park for five weeks.
It would be from May 27th through August 3rd.
From May 27th through August 3rd.
I'll second.
You guys are awesome. Thank you.
We're having a first day.
We're just.
Now, we're close, Mark.
Put them up in the same spot?
Same spot, yeah, so it wouldn't be killing any grass. It would be just off, it's, there's yellow lines painted there, right?
Okay, so you're putting them up by Highway 12, then?
Right. Same place they've been for the last two years in concerts. Right now, we bring them in, they take them out. We bring them in, they take them out.
Okay. It's during the summer, they get cleaned out once a week. They probably put some deodorant cakes in there or something like that.
Yeah, there's, there's plenty of non-poop smelling stuff in there.
Okay, alright, just make sure. Alright, anything else? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Carries.
Now I can say, thank you, guys are awesome, and thanks to you all for doing what you do, I appreciate it.
So, Lisa, through the Cambridge Foundation, you know, you were looking for projects for that. I know permanent bathrooms are really expensive, but that's something we could put on that list, is possibly putting a permanent, full-year-round bathroom on that location.
Wow. Wow, that's an ask. That's, could I get that? I like it.
So, you can add it to your list, maybe?
Waterfill Station.
Gotta think outside the box once in a while.
Yeah.
Alrighty, let's move on then to item B. Mike Grump's SERP, Servi- Survey.
Can I do it? Sure. Mike Grump came in last night at the Plan Commission meeting. He presented a CSM to us, basically just to record the documents as a CSM. He wants to correct the address as identified on the documents. It had 200 West North Street. It's actually 201, and really, he's just intending to show where the lot lines are. He wasn't asking to change anything.
No, the, the one change, where it has the forty-five ninety-one, those parcels are currently with Lot Two and Three with the alley in between, so he is moving those, that little area and attaching it to Lot One, rather than with the lots across the street, so.
Oh, got it, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
It was recommended unanimously by Plan Commission to approve.
You wanna make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the CSM from Mike Grump for Two on West North Street.
I'll second.
Okay, discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carries unanimously. Alright, update on Koshkana Creek.
I will take this one. You'll recall that the last time we had a meeting up this on the agenda, the board directed me to contact David Hughes, who is the Chair of the Drainage District, who did the work, to just ask if they're willing to, what role the Drainage Board would be willing to play to, to help us remove the trees. And, we were talking about it in the context of an after-the-fact permit that might be required because they perform the work in the floodplain district, the floodplain boundaries of, of our jurisdiction. And, when I talked to David Hughes, he pushed back on the idea that the Drainage District would ever be subject to floodplain zoning. So, I looked at the statute myself, and I, my read is that in chapter eighty-seven, they are subject to our floodplain zoning as long as they're not, their, their exception only exists in an agricultural area. So, as long as they're on a parcel with a structured use, we would have the authority to require an after-the-fact permit of them. And that means that, as part of that, we could ask for their help in removing the trees. So, what I don't have a great handle on is sort of documentation about where these, these are. We, when we were fighting with the D N R about whether we needed the wetlands and waterway maps, permits, we had maps of, you know, the district boundaries. We don't have any great maps that are on a, a smaller scale in order to, to require this after-the-fact permit, and so, I mean, we can put the burden on, we can put the burden on the Drainage District to, to come up with that, and so, but I wanted to take your direction on that. It might be a little bit of a, a little bit of a fight. I think the, the statutory reading here is pretty, pretty clear-cut, and it could be just that they need to be told that this is how the statute parses, parses that out. And it happened because of my history, happened to be one of, like, two attorneys in the state who love Drainage District law. So, I think, I think that's where we're at. We, we can demand more of them or ask for more. We can require an after-the-fact permit of them, and as part of that, we could ask for their help in hauling these things off. I just, I wanted to take your feedback on if, if that's what we want to do. I, because I know that we were balancing the fact that we, we do want to work collaboratively with them going forward, but this is.
In a private and public land and.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I think anywhere where we have floodplain authority, we have the authority to require this, whether it's public or private land, anywhere our zoning ordinance, our floodplain zoning ordinance is, is on. But, it's, it is still a policy direction for you to, you know, to flex those muscles.
So, what do you need from us if we want you to continue on?
That's what I would want to know, if you want me to continue on and say, yes, we are going to require an after-the-fact permit, and if so, here's what we want you to do. We want, we want you guys to be the, the heavy lifting, the literal heavy lifting of the trees, to get them out of there and find a disposal location for them.
Okay.
And, I'm just assuming that would be everywhere where we have the, you know, unless you wanted to parse that out more, in a more granular way, I would just assume that would be everywhere where the trees are down, where we have floodplain zoning authority.
So, that would basically be within the city limits of Cambridge?
Exactly.
Village limits.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Unless there were somehow an agricultural use within the village limits, which is probably not on that stretch.
Wanna make a motion to authorize Jane to continue on?
I'd make a motion for Jane to continue the discussion.
I'll second that.
Further discussion?
Yeah, I mean, I, we'll, we might have to, you know, I, I can, I can start with a phone call and just let him know that this is gonna come, that, I think that'll be, that I think that's the right procedure probably, or at least the one I would recommend, that the, they are an entity that votes and probably will have to vote on how they're gonna deal with us and, and treat this scenario. I don't think they've ever been asked to follow this before, and I, I think it doesn't come up very often for Drainage Districts.
So, for the map issue, you're talking, the map's too big we have. Can you just take a photo of it and then print it whatever size you need?
Well, here's what we don't have is to know, okay, our floodplain, here are where the trees are. We, we don't have a map of where the trees are or where that coincides with our floodplain ordinance. So, that's a little bit tricky. We're trying to enforce something where we just kinda like, kinda know where it is, but we don't have a, I don't think there was ever a formal. But we don't have a, I don't think there was ever a formal project developed with plans and specs about where those trees were going to be located. So it's a little bit, it's just a little bit different of an enforcement situation than a normal one where you'd have some sort of documentation.
You know it when you see it?
Yeah, everywhere, right? Just everywhere in the creek.
So is this from like the bridge? From the bridge here all the way to Highway 12 and 18? Not other, or Highway 18, I'm sorry, all the way to Highway 18? Main Street to Jefferson Street?
Not including that portion that they did a couple of years back?
No.
It's not, it's not on the north side of Highway 18? Just that section in there?
It's not even in there. All it is is from where Park Road ends.
Yep.
If you look over, it starts there.
Yep.
And then it comes along to the bridge.
To the bridge, okay, yeah.
So it doesn't go all the way over to 18.
Oh, okay, so, yeah. And there's people who live all throughout there, so, yeah.
They were happy, you know why? They got trees taken down that were going to fall down in the river.
Sure, sure. But it should be nice if they got removed from the banks now.
Well, they're not, they have nothing on the resident side.
Oh, okay, it's all on the other side?
It's all on the other side.
It really looks bad over here by the bridge. So if we had to compromise with them, I'd want to at least get the bridge part removed.
I'll make note of that.
What was that? Yeah, that's the spot that really needs, because it, yeah. It's unseemly.
Okay, anything else? All right, all those in favor of having Jane move ahead with this and helping us? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, Jane, keep up the good work. COVID policy and the recommendation from the Personnel Committee.
The recommendation from Personnel is that we were going to go with the CDC policy, which states that it's looked at now as a flu or any other, and people can use their paid time off or their sick time for COVID, so.
Are you still recommending the five, like, five-day?
CDC has now said if you no longer have a fever and if your symptoms are improving, they don't have, so we've always followed where it was the 10 days, it was the five days. We were paying people when they were off because during COVID, we couldn't afford for our whole staff to be depleted with the elections going on and public works, we couldn't have, you know, so we've paid, the people didn't have to use their FTO. See, the new guidelines do, you know, say, treat it like the flu. So I just wanted verification that, yep, we're now using PTO. We're no longer covering if people are out with COVID.
Okay, do you want to make a motion to that effect?
I'll make a motion that we, the village staff utilizes the CDC's COVID policy with our village staff using sick time.
Second.
Second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
I guess I'd clarify any PTO. If people are new, they may not have sick time.
Yeah, paid PTO.
You're all right with that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all those in favor? Please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, carried. Moving on, unfinished business, Fire Commission update.
We had a special meeting on the March 28, 2024, out in Oakland. It was around 6:00 PM. So I was called by myself and Sheila to try to get some actionable items taken care of. Unfortunately, of the agenda items, there was quite a few things removed from the agenda. And the Commission President appointed a lawyer to kind of take on the meeting. So, and then the other discussions we're going to have on that are going to be in closed session. So we did pay about $13,000 in bills, so, and we did not review anything budget-wise. So to go into 10B, payment of second quarter dues, I mean, we were going to postpone that until we had this meeting to see if we had any actionable items from it, but we did not, so.
So we still don't have a working budget?
No. So I wish I had more to report. I left the meeting very frustrated because I felt like it was three hours was kind of a waste of my time. But we'll keep a motion out of it, right, so.
Could you clarify, the Commission President appointed a lawyer, was anyone else from their?
Yeah, he also brought in Mr. Smithback as his appointed person.
Where does the President have the authority to appoint who runs a meeting in his absence? He doesn't. If he's not there, then the board should have voted who runs the meeting.
Yeah, usually it's a pro tem situation where we would vote on it and.
So my question is, is this lawyer working for Mark Cook? Or is this lawyer working for the EMS Commission?
As it stands right now, he's stated that he's working for the President.
Then is the President paying him? Because I don't want any of my taxpayer dollars. If he's working for Mark Cook, I don't want my taxpayer dollars to be paying his bills.
Which are over $9,000 so far.
Is that considered a legal meeting?
It's a legal meeting because it was posted.
It was posted?
And we had a quorum, but. So the legality of it, it was legal, but again.
Did he, sorry, Chris?
Yeah.
Did he actually state that he's working for Mark Cook?
He didn't say the name, Mark Cook, he said the President. He's working for the President until the Commission decides otherwise.
But, but.
We had a motion on there to replace the President, but that was removed by vote.
But he, but he doesn't work for one person, he works for the full Commission. Do we have any recourse on that, Jane?
As you know, from a legal standpoint, the argument is it's a lot easier to get your information funneled in from one person v. the whole board. That's what the legal.
I mean, that's information, that's not, he shouldn't be taking sides.
To clarify, the lawyer did not vote?
No.
Did Mr. Smithback vote?
Yes.
So they had two representatives, essentially?
Well, I watched the video of that meeting.
Yeah.
My recollection was he said he worked for the board, Mark Cook. I never heard him say Mark Cook, I may have misheard that. But my recollection was he said he was employed by the board.
I think it's a.
I think someone asked him who pays the salary, and he said the Commission.
The Commission pays it.
So if the Commission's paying the salary, he's employed, he works for the board.
It didn't sound to me like he was representing the board, though, in that meeting. That's what my question was.
I thought his wording was, I work for my client.
And the board is his client.
Do we have clarification that he is actually, you know, that's my question, is do we have clarification that he's actually the Commission Attorney? Or?
He is the Commission.
I mean, we have an attorney who makes it very clear to us every time. She gives us recommendations and then says, but I don't set policy, you set policy. You guys have to decide among yourselves what you're doing here. This is our complaint with the last lawyer.
Yeah, it's hard to think about the recourse to undo the actions that were done at the time. I guess, you know, in the meeting, the votes that were made in the meeting. I guess it's a different question to think about going forward. How to establish the role of an attorney at the meeting.
To me, it's, you know, it seemed very choreographed. It was all kind of pre-planned. You know, I went into the meeting thinking, well, there's probably a 60%, 70% chance that Mr. Cook isn't going to be here. So we'll probably have to vote on a pro tem, so that can run the meeting. And then it was, oh, no, the lawyer's going to take the meeting and do basically what the previous lawyer did. And that was not voted on by the Commission. That was, that was an order from Mr. Cook.
He couldn't make that order. He doesn't have the authority to do that.
So.
Topic at hand, second quarter dues.
Still my recommendation that we hold off on paying dues.
I don't want to pay.
I agree.
Agreed.
I'll make a motion to hold off paying second quarter dues until we have. Budget? That's a budget? I don't know how we want to word it.
Yeah, I think we need to define what that means.
What that means?
I mean, does it mean all five municipalities have to vote on it again?
I'll second, by the way.
Oh, sorry.
Oh, sorry, okay. Thank you.
I mean, I think you need to define that, because if you say just a budget, they could just give us a piece of paper and here's your budget. Is that what you want? If it's five municipalities and that's going to take months.
Budget recommendation? An approved budget. An approved budget. They do not have an approved budget.
The ramifications of that, that's going to take months.
Why would that take months? If they give us a budget.
They haven't even started looking at developing one.
We meet in two weeks.
When did the other municipalities meet?
We've asked for this since Jane, well.
I'm not arguing that point.
I know, and I'm not trying to be argumentative either, but, I mean, we talked about arbitration, we talked about holding off until, you know, that happened.
And we've written multiple letters that get ignored. And I just think what's going to happen is it's going to go three months, the Commission's going to run out of money, EMTs aren't going to get paid. Then what?
We had this on as an agenda item, and that was one of the agenda items that Mr. Smithback wanted removed. Review of 2023 budget versus actual. He wanted it removed. It got voted on and was decided that we would discuss it, but it was not fruitful.
One reason I'm struggling with our recourse is that the recourse that we have under the IGA would be, you know, we write a letter and then we ask for mediation, you know, to resolve the issues. Those are the things that make sense in a normal circumstance to do. I mean, the other thing that occurs to me is to make sure that at least I can share my legal opinion, that we can't remove agenda items that are publicly noticed without, the attorney shouldn't advise a Commission member that he shouldn't talk about agenda items that were publicly noticed.
Agenda item.
Right, and he shouldn't talk about the merits. And my understanding is that that happened at that meeting. So I guess we can equip our Commission representatives to push back when that happens. Otherwise, it's hard to know what to do, except for to, I mean.
It's hard to make that pushback when I don't have a Jane in my pocket, you know, when I'm at the Commission meeting. You know, it's the lawyers versus, you know.
But there was a vote, and the committee voted to take it off the agenda.
But Chris wanted to talk about the substance before the vote happened. He wanted to raise an issue, is my understanding, about why it was important to leave it on the agenda. And I think the attorney said, no, we can't talk about the, we can't talk about why you'd leave it on because that gets into the substance of the agenda item. We have to first take a vote. So the procedural maneuver there swallowed up substance that was properly noticed on the agenda item, in my humble opinion. I've just never heard of doing that before, and I don't think it was appropriate.
That makes sense.
Can we push, we've given leeway on the mediation and stuff because they had a new attorney.
Yep.
Can we push forward and say, okay, no more leeway?
We can do that, and we could add, if we wanted to, the issue of who is your client. I think the attorney ethic rules are very clear, who is one's client in the situation? To whom do your loyalties, do you owe loyalties? And it's the Commission as a whole, as opposed to one member of the Commission. So if we wanted to add that to our mediation list and to push that, that's one option.
I'd love to add that to the mediation list, because I've got serious questions. I mean, that was, that was part of our concerns with the previous lawyer, is that who quit abruptly, gave like a no-day notice that he was no longer serving the Commission, which seems very odd to me that any sort of legal person, entity would do. It makes it very suspect to me on why he quit so abruptly. So I would want to make sure that the new attorney that we have isn't just a carbon copy of the old one that the EMS Commission got rid of. Fire and EMS Commission got rid of.
Understands who his true client really is?
His true client, really, in a sense, is all five municipalities.
Well, here's where we're at. We've got a motion and we've got a second to postpone this payment of the second quarter dues. And I will tell you, my concern is that you've got wages and you also have a payment for a vehicle for the Fire Department. And I don't know how much is there. And I don't want to see the credit rating for the Village of the Volunteer Cambridge Area Fire and EMS shot to smithereens because we aren't giving them the money to make the payment.
But we're very happy to give them, we will give them our payment if they give us a budget.
Even a proposed budget. We don't even have a proposed budget.
I mean, right, because it was, oh, well, well, actually, they did.
Oh, that's right, they did.
Something.
Yes.
But you know what?
As soon as that was not approved by all communities, they were supposed to buy the IGA, create a new one.
Create a new budget. So I need to, we need to see the new budget. I need to know, understand why they have 500 hours of overtime every month. And where that money's coming from. I just don't understand it. And if we don't stand up now, then how is anybody going to ever believe anything we ever say?
I mean, Mark, I was the one at the January meeting that argued to pay that first quarter because I wanted them to have, to get paid. They, you know, they do deserve to get paid for their job. But at what point do we have to hold our other municipalities accountable to them as well?
So if they're upset and not getting paid, they need to talk to the municipalities that are not participating and doing their job. I'm sorry, Eric, were you going to say something?
No, I was just thinking, per the IGA, yeah, we have 60 days to pay it, which I think we passed, no?
No.
Not quite?
No.
And then interest starts accruing, if I recall? Or we shoot ourselves in the foot?
We got the bill.
Early.
Yeah.
At the end of March, I believe.
I mean, I'm fine with not paying it now, but I think we've got to keep tabs on with Sheila and how much money they have and make a hard decision right before they run out of money.
I agree. Yeah.
You know, I don't think we want an EMS guy not doing, making a call because he didn't get paid and something major happens, and next thing becomes, well, it's because Cambridge didn't pay their bill. That's how it will be spun.
I think in, no matter what we do, we're going to be vilified because either we pay it with no oversight whatsoever, or we don't pay it.
Do we know if the town of Oakland has paid theirs?
No.
They have not.
Well, I think we just wait two more weeks.
Do we amend it to say, wait?
I mean, if the, well, we'll meet in two weeks.
Right.
Yeah.
I mean, and if the 60 days hasn't expired, we are under no obligation to pay it early. So I want to know when that 60 days, if you could look into when that 60-day notice is. That would be helpful for our next conversation.
I want to say the 23rd of this month.
Which is the night of our meeting.
But I have not seen any agenda.
That's the day of our meeting.
Again, it was, it was thrown out there. I haven't seen any agenda or anything else, but that was what was proposed at the end of the meeting.
If it's the 23rd, you can't go. So it has to be a different date.
Right.
Because you can't have it on the same day as, and our village board meetings are posted. They know when we have village board meetings. Whoever suggested the 23rd should not have suggested it.
Anything further on this one?
So what's the current motion for now?
Yep, we just have to vote.
To postpone it.
Postpone for the next two weeks.
So you're, nothing else? You got anything else, Chris?
Not for this session.
Okay. We got a motion, a second to postpone it. All those in favor of postponing the payment of our second quarter dues, please signify by saying yes.
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 And those that are in opposition? I am. I think we should pay it because I'm worried that the long-term Fire Department, when they need a vehicle and we have to finance it and our credit rating is, if they don't have the money. I hope I'm wrong on this one, Joe. Yeah.
Why isn't Paul doing what he's asked to?
Yeah, okay. All right.
Yep, I agree.
So that's where we're at. I'll, I'm voting against it. I think we should pay it, but.
But it's not even due yet, Mark. So just from that standpoint, why would we pay a bill early? Why wouldn't we want to have the interest?
We had talked about that and we never, it moved to the beginning of the quarter.
No.
I thought somewhere in there, there was a.
We used to pay.
Yearly.
Yearly and we opted to do it quarterly instead and.
Quarterly.
Yeah, to save the money here. But no, it doesn't say we have to do it at a certain time.
All right. Well, we're going to hold off for two weeks, so.
And just so I'm clear, any, any action, any direction for me on this issue of the attorney?
I feel like we have to do something because we keep spinning our wheels.
Do you have a suggestion?
Well, I mean, adding it to our, adding it to our pending mediation and adding it, that it.
Has the new attorney seen that list?
Yes, yes. He called me when he was first hired and, and acknowledged that he was looking at it.
I think it's, he's had plenty of time to get acclimated to his new client. So now's, I think now's the time to.
Do we have a timeframe that, I mean, do we have an end date that we can give that we have to do this by such and such a date? Or?
The mediation you're talking about.
The mediation is past that already. It was 60 days.
Okay.
So they're past the mediation. I mean, yeah. I guess, Jane, I'd like to see, do we need a motion or can we just direct you?
You can just direct me to, yeah.
And I don't know about the rest of the Board, but I would like to see Jane reach out, letter probably, whatever's the appropriate method, to address when are we going to get mediation? And then to add our concern about the position of that lawyer and, and who that lawyer is representing and making sure that it's the full Commission, which is the municipalities and not an individual for one municipality.
And also how we want to pay our, our dues. We want to pay it, but we, we have an ask and that ask is, you know, we need to see an approved budget.
That's laid out in the IGA, so it's really not asking much.
It's not out.
And you've been giving us reports, so I don't think we have a question on the Fire side of items. It's, I, I have questions on EMS side and the administrative overhead that the EMS Commission is, is spending right now.
All right, so Jane, you know what you need to do or you've got a, a clear?
We'll add this, the second issue to, about the budget to the letter for mediation. Is that the direction?
If we go to mediation, right, would be the next step. And say we win mediation, then what happens?
Well, then, I mean, whatever the mediator decides is the way to handle it.
We win the mediation, the mediator agrees with us.
Yeah, well, then, I mean, that's what you have to do before you can file any sort of action in Circuit Court. Like mediation is sort of just how we have agreed that we're going to resolve any conflicts that we have according to the IGA. So what we would probably.
That is what I'm saying.
Right, I mean, we could just go directly to Circuit Court and file, you know, a mandamus action to say you, you don't have a discretionary duty on, I mean, that's, that is always an option, too.
Are we just throwing away more of your time and money to get the same result we've gotten with every other letter you've written?
I would say that would be true if, if it wasn't new legal representation. We have new legal representation and despite what happened this last meeting, we should give them the benefit of the doubt and try to run mediation through them to see what, what they do. That, that's my opinion.
That makes sense. I agree.
Okay.
All right. Anything else?
Is there a timeframe in that mediation then?
It was April 1st, as I recall.
So when you send a new letter then, will you put a new date saying this is like the drop dead date? I'm just curious what the Board's position is on that.
I'd like to see what your conversation, I'd like to see how he receives your letter and acknowledges it and if he says, I need more time. And then, then we can be, and specifically how much time you need because this Board has only so much tolerance to wait for something that we're, you know. That's in the IGA. It's in the IGA. We're following the rules.
Can we just go to arbitration?
Well, we have, I mean, yes, we have to come, I mean, we could just set a mediation or arbitration.
So can you call them and just say?
I mean, the informal dispute resolution, we could just follow the processes. It's just a matter of scheduling with them. We were actually at the point before Steve Zock retired or resigned suddenly. We were at the point where we actually had someone set to do an initial meeting.
More impactful and cheaper because you send a letter, they're just going to ignore it. Just call them up and say, we want to set a date for mediation and here's when, let's get it set.
I mean, that's an option, too.
I mean, that's going to force his hand.
It's, it's just a question of do you want to raise this issue in writing first of the, who is your client? Yes, yes, I want that raised writing first.
I think that's, we're just wasting time.
Well, and then we've, we've got a meeting here in two weeks.
Hmm? No, I, so, so we want to waste time because they are?
I would like, I would actually really like to hear that lawyer's stance on who it is that he is representing Bill because I'm not sure I know. And it would, I think it would be beneficial before we enter into mediation with him to understand.
Well, he can't enter into mediation as something he's not representing. So if he's not representing the Commission, he couldn't enter in that conversation about mediation.
That's what I think we're looking to clarify.
Well, he would have to clarify that when she has to go to mediation. He'd have to say, I can't go to mediation because I'm not representing the Commission. And if he said, yeah, I can do that, then he's representing the Commission, right? Why waste the time and spend the money for something that we'll get the answer to if we just say, let's go to mediation?
Well, I think that letter is twofold. What I had asked was having the letter be twofold. One, who are you representing? And two, at what date will you be ready to commence mediation? And then if he comes back with a date that's not acceptable to us, then we counteract with a different date.
Do we want to determine a date?
I think, what, what's the end result here? We want, we're, we're trying to get the attorney to bring to light to the Commission, the leadership of the Commission, the people on the Commission, that we want the lawyer to say, hey, guys, you need to get your crap together and figure out a budget. Because if you don't, Oakland or Cambridge is not going to pay their second, you know, their dues for the second quarter. That's, we want to sort of leverage the lawyer into making that argument for us because that seems to be the only person that Mr. Cook is listening to. And if he's only going to listen to the lawyer and he's not going to listen to his Commission members, then we have to go down that road. You know, we strongly recommend that you have a meeting to get this budget approved. And, and after that, it's. We had, I mean, we've, we've searched every opportunity. We've given them every symbol, single opportunity.
All right. I do think that there's some questions here. So clarify that this attorney is indeed working for the Commission and not an individual. I, I think that Chris brings up a good point. What we're trying to do is to, to, to get everybody on board to make the payment and we still need to have their final budget number. You know, we can't just rely upon last year, even if it is last year, get the thing in front of us so that we can release the funds that we have. And hopefully we can do all this within a couple of weeks. And we do not have unpaid employees of the Fire and the EMS and we are also not in arrears with any payment on a vehicle.
And to clarify, Tammy, we have the mon, the money earmarked already, correct?
Yes.
You know what to do here, Jane? All right, anything else on Fire and EMS? All right, moving on, correspondence. Don't see anything. Future questions, referrals to staff or future agenda items. Lisa, that's just on the Committee assignments, correct?
Yep, organizational meeting is April 23rd, so I had sent the recommendations. So if you get back to me what committees you'd like to serve on, I'll get those tomorrow. That will be on the next agenda. Charles Faisal will be on the next agenda.
Okay. All righty, upcoming meetings, April 10th, Library Board. April 16th, Water and Sewer. April 23rd, Village Board. May 13th, Plan Commission. May 14th, Joint Law Enforcement, as well as the Village Board.
We are looking at setting up a Public Works meeting. I will also need a Licensing Committee meeting with a new license coming up.
Okay.
May I ask a question just for clarification? So normally your next meeting would be May 7th for the Village. Is it put off an extra week from the 23rd to the 14th? That's three weeks in the week.
We're always the second Tuesday, second and fourth Tuesday of the month.
Not every Thursday.
Yeah, sometimes we get an extra day, week off.
And Tammy just added, May 7th is the next Economic Development Committee meeting.
All right, item 14, please, anybody?
I'll make a motion to convene it to close session.